We'll reconvene with our committee of the whole. We have six items in front of us today. The first one is municipal court probation contract through inter-local agreement between the city of Bellingham and Waukesha County. Bellingham Municipal Court currently contracts with the Waukesha County Probation Department for probation services. This contract is a modification of the current contract, 2013-0621. No substantive changes have been incorporated, and Darlene Peterson is going to do a little overview.
Thank you, Darlene Peterson, Municipal Court. We've been contracting with the county for probation for as long as I can remember, at least fifteen, twenty years. In that time, probation department has done all of our probation supervision. They also do a lot of our pre-trial work and pre-trial monitoring. The contract that they're presenting currently is a continuation of what we have been doing. When they figure out their cost for probation, it is based on the year before, and then the actual cost is taken at the end of the year. Sometimes we will get a check back, sometimes they will send us a check, or we will have to send them a check, depending on how expenses actually worked out. But I am pleased to say it is on actual costs. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'd be happy to answer any for you.
And you recommend it.
And I do recommend that we approve this contract.
So this is for a vote?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion in front of us to approve the probation contract and the inter-local agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
The next item in front of us today is recommendation for improvements to the city's commercial zoning code. Graduate students from the University of Washington's Department of Urban Design and Planning have completed analysis of the city's commercial zoning code and will be presenting their recommendations. And I'm going to turn this over to Rick Sepler, our Planning and Community Development Director, to introduce.
Good afternoon, members of the council. As you might recall, this was in our work program. Building on the lean process review of procedures and codes, the city has been working with UW's graduate program in the Department of Urban Design and Planning since January of this year. As council might also recall, a number of concerns have been raised regarding the complexity of our current commercial code. As development and redevelopment increases in our downtown and commercial areas, many seemingly simple inquiries from new and existing businesses looking to be established or expand often turn into multi-day research projects to determine whether it's appropriate or not for that use to be established. The intent of looking at our existing commercial code is not to lower our standards, our expectations, but to ensure that high-quality development occurs, perhaps by eliminating overlapping consistencies and unnecessary complexity. The UW team comes for council today to present their findings and recommendations, and I'd like to introduce them, and they will introduce themselves and their work.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, council and mayor, for having us here today. So as Rick said, we are a team of urban planning students from the University of Washington in Seattle. Working with the community, we have been charged to review the commercial zoning code and present recommendations which offer a roadmap towards making the commercial zoning code more effective.
Can you bring the mic a little closer to you, please? Thank you.
My name is Eric Geida. A month ago, you met Elise Keim, Sing Chang He, and Jen Lambrec. Our presenters today are also Greg Kraus, Hannah Grant Nowch, and Zach Webin. As an introduction, I'll briefly review the process. The first ten weeks involved getting to know the Bellingham community, and this resulted in an initial conditions report which summarized our understanding of the background to the situation. In the spring, we convened six focus groups to more thoroughly understand the challenges. And I recognize a few people from the focus groups are here today, so thank you for being here and thank you for participating in the focus groups. The last month, we've been engaged in a significant amount of research and synthesis of ideas to arrive at recommendations for how the city of Bellingham can move forward. So after sorting through the responses to the questions in the focus groups, we identified five primary issues that came through in all our discussions. And these big five issues, which we brought to you a month ago, included: complexity. The complexity of the commercial zoning code makes it difficult to comprehend. Predictability versus flexibility. How can the code offer both predictability for the community, yet also the flexibility to respond to opportunities as they arise? Intent. Understanding the purpose of the code gives us a better idea of how to apply it. Consistency in process. A consistent process will enable fair application of the zoning code and make it easier. Finally, community and market nexus. The code needs to both protect and preserve the character of the community, but also be cognizant of the market forces of development. The community focus groups identified these challenges. The Bellingham Comprehensive Plan was also cognizant of this and charges us and you, the city council, with addressing them. The current comprehensive plan, which was approved in 2006, recognized the challenge of the zoning code. Specifically, on page six of the land use section, the city is charged with organizing, consolidating, and simplifying development regulations and permitting procedures. References to a couple other specific strategies are also found in the document. The gist of the zoning challenges that we have a layering of is that we have a layering of codes that have been applied over the last forty years. In addition to the basic land uses, the zoning code contains four use qualifiers and is found throughout twenty-seven different neighborhood zoning tables. There are also seven different urban village overlays, and the code contains a legacy of planned contracts as well as references to resolutions in the past. This has resulted in a code that, while it may reflect the community's vision for development, has become unnecessarily complex, and this is both a disservice to the community and to developers. I'm going to go through a brief example to illustrate these challenges. Let's say I am looking at developing a mid-sized commercial lot on the north side of the city. Because zoning is based on the neighborhood zoning tables, I need to know the neighborhood, and I can look that up through City IQ. A few clicks into the city of Bellingham's website will take us to this screen, where on the left side, we find sections of the Bellingham Civil Code. I'm going to go to the neighborhood zoning tables on the right side, and then to area six for the property I'm interested in. So this is the Meridian neighborhood, and in this example, I find this zoning table for area six. Some of the information found on this zoning table is relatively straightforward, but some of it is not so straightforward. The density requirements may be unclear, and in this case, there are several special conditions and special regulations that would require us to dig further into the code. To do so, I'd need to go back to the previous screen, search for several plan use qualifiers on the left-hand side column, look at other special requirements, and look at zoning incentives, which are found on the left-hand side column. Our attempt to understand the zoning code for area six in the Meridian neighborhood has cumulatively taken perhaps forty to fifty clicks for a property with moderate restrictions. Frankly, given its complexity, I'm not sure I've significantly or sufficiently identified all of the restrictions. And this is an example of a moderately difficult site. Just for reference, this is another site, perhaps even more difficult. The zoning table extends a couple rows with many different columns. It's worth pointing out that we spent a fair amount of time looking up the zoning for random properties, and that this is not a unique example. So with our big five issues in mind, as well as this and other examples, to fully understand the zoning for a particular site, we needed a process for going forward. We simply dug in and looked at the following. We reviewed Bellingham's commercial zoning code in depth. We looked at different types of zoning, from traditional Euclidean to more contemporary form-based and performance-based zoning, and assessed the strengths and weaknesses of each. We researched the codes of other cities, in particular comparable cities such as Fort Collins, Colorado, and Tacoma, Washington. We related how the types of zoning address the big five issues in the current code and referred back to the focus groups to more thoroughly understand the issues. And we looked to the comprehensive plan for declarations of intent. Our approach is that our recommendations do not seek to change the fundamental intent of the code or rewrite it from scratch, but they do reorganize it. We see this as a challenge. We see this challenge as an opportunity to maintain the high standards which Bellingham expects while simplifying it to make it easier and more effective for both the community and developers. We have arrived at six concrete progressive steps, which we hope offer both a realistic and substantial improvement to the current commercial zoning code in Bellingham. I'm going to turn it over to Greg, who will lead us into these recommendations.
Thank you, Eric. We recommend six different and connected changes that all help to mitigate the effects of the big five issues identified in different ways, starting with the simplest and most manageable recommendation and leading to the increasingly challenging but most effective changes to the commercial code. Stepping back for a moment, I want to draw attention to the big five key phrases that align the bottom of the screen. As we discuss each recommendation, please know which are highlighted in yellow indicating which of the big five issues the specific recommendation is addressing. You may have questions and concerns about specific recommendations, but we urge everyone to wait till the end of the presentation to address them. Please understand a great deal of thought and research went into each recommendation, and much greater detail can be found in the final report. Each recommendation builds on the previous, and the sequence needs to be considered as a whole to produce the most substantial opportunities and most effective commercial code for Bellingham. As with many things in life, the heavier the lift, the greater and more profound the reward will be. Now, on to our recommendations. Our first recommendation addresses minor adjustments to the commercial code's online presence, a feature that was specifically mentioned by focus group participants. After my colleagues and I reached out to the city's code publishing company, called Code Publishing Company, we identified simple alterations that would bring the existing appearance and features up to today's industry standards. Pulling from the city of Quincy, Washington, features such as call-out boxes, for example, when a user hovers over highlighted words, the definition appears and would remove the need for definition hunting. This begins to address some of the issues identified by focus groups, both increasing navigability and reducing the complexity without altering the physical commercial code itself. An example from Bellingham would be to convert all linked documents, such as ordinances, to a format that would be searchable via the main search box. This would be an easy conversion from existing PDFs to a hand-coded HTML format, a service already provided by the current code publishing company and utilized by the city for other portions of the commercial code. Our second recommendation is to reevaluate the existing verbiage to better reflect the current commercial code and the community's needs, and to commit to more frequent and periodic updates as amendments are adopted. For an example of outdated uses, in the notes section of Bellingham's Urban Village Table of Uses, we have highlighted "ofal" and "lampblack." While these uses made sense forty-plus years ago, today, limited individuals even know what they are. A well-maintained commercial code is a valuable tool for community and economic development, and it is important to rise to the occasion when it becomes out of date, or it loses that value and is ultimately harmful by adding complexity and reducing the consistency within the process that a user has to navigate. Building on this, Hannah Grant will discuss the next recommendation.
Thank you, Greg. Our third recommendation is both time and effort intensive, but would greatly reduce the complexity of the current commercial zoning code. As you've heard, the current commercial zoning code has been amended and patchworked over multiple times over the last forty years, creating a network of ordinances, some with the same intentions. We recommend finding the commonalities and overlaps in the current commercial code and using these to create development standards that would be consistent citywide. These development standards would take place of the special regulations and special conditions currently found in Bellingham's commercial zoning table, greatly simplifying the commercial zoning requirements. Both the rigor and high-quality standards that are currently found in Bellingham's commercial zoning code would be maintained. For example, these two special regulations, one from Roosevelt and one from Sunnyland, both intend to avoid negative impacts from lighting of commercial buildings. These regulations hope to mitigate possible disturbances of residential areas by regulating the lighting of commercial development, a common interest for all residents. This could easily be written into one development standard rather than being spelled out for individual parcels. This leads me to our fourth recommendation. We recommend the city implement a context-based design review process that is consistent throughout Bellingham. As it stands, a design review process is in place for the city's popular urban villages as well as big-box stores. During the community focus groups, we heard that many of the urban villages in Bellingham are well-liked, vibrant areas that have maintained Bellingham's character and high standard of living. We suggest implementing a context-based design review process with thresholds and levels of review. The thresholds could be based on project size or lot size, while the levels of review could be streamlined, administrative, or public process. Design review is a tool that not only addresses aesthetics, but also guides building impacts. In addition to written text, design guidelines are commonly visually communicated, reducing the complexity of a code and providing another way for a municipality to explain the intent for their community. This example shows a graphic from the Honolulu Design Guidelines, clearly portraying what a development should and should not include. Here is another example of a visual communication taken from the Los Angeles Design Guidelines, clearly identifying the design elements and desired built form. The process we suggest implementing would be context-based, guiding how a building fits into the community. Context-based design does not mean one size fits all and does not create cookie-cutter design. A design review process would uphold the intentions of the zoning table without being parcel-specific. We recognize that this suggestion adds a layer of procedures. However, implementation of our six-tiered recommendations removes multiple layers of the currently complex code. Fifth, we suggest replacing all use qualifiers. Currently, a complex zoning table identifies commercial parcels as having one of four use qualifiers: auto, waterfront, neighborhood, and planned. These qualifiers were put into the code to specify uses allowed. As of today, only the planned use qualifier is still effective, as almost all of the other areas have been built out. The planned use qualifier attempts to guide development and design. With recommendations three and four, development standards and design review, the application of use qualifiers has become redundant. As Eric has shared, the 2006 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan specifically states that the regulations should be created to reduce the use of the planned use qualifier. With this goal in mind, we suggest replacing the use qualifiers with the development standards and a citywide, context-based design review process for the commercial zoning code in Bellingham. For our final recommendation, I will pass it on to Zach.
Thank you, Hannah Grant. As you've seen from the previous five recommendations, the possibilities for Bellingham to improve its commercial zoning code range from small text and formatting changes to reorganizing existing development guidelines. These recommendations can be applied to Bellingham's current structure of neighborhood plans and urban villages within the comprehensive plan using existing commercial zones. However, our final recommendation stresses the need for unifying commercial zones across neighborhoods and urban villages by reorganizing or recategorizing existing commercial zones. This recommendation does not advocate for more commercial areas in the city, rather it only acts as the final step for updating existing land use maps to be consistent with the previous recommendations we have made. This would require substantial commitment in time and resources, as well as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, but we believe the consistency would pay dividends down the road for community and business interests. An example of how the current zoning structure makes interpretation of zoning maps difficult can be found in the Meridian Neighborhood Zoning Map again. Areas twenty-one and twenty-two are both labeled as commercial planned areas on the map, yet limited light industrial uses are allowed in area twenty-two but not in area twenty-one, as is shown in the use qualifier column. Relying on the current system of use qualifiers, special conditions, and special regulations to distinguish commercial zones from one another has placed added burdens of time and money on both city staff and business and developers while leaving the community members confused as to the intent behind such designations. Throughout the focus group process, the complexity of the current commercial zoning structure was identified as a weakness of the current code. This recommendation is an additional opportunity to address that issue. If the city decides to pursue reorganizing its commercial zones, we recommend classification based on intensity of uses rather than allowable individual uses outlined on a near parcel-by-parcel Commercial codes could be organized in a hierarchy based on a range of factors, such as expected building size, expected traffic impacts, or many other indicators. These are some examples of possible zoning classifications that could be organized by intensity. Once a list of commercial zones has been created, we would recommend creating a table indicating which zones common commercial uses would be permissible in. This type of table is already used in urban villages throughout the city and would be beneficial to implement citywide. An outside example of this kind of table is Tacoma's Use Table shown here. Organizing information in this fashion would be easier to use for business owners and developers who already know their intended use but may not know which zones would be allowable for such a use. During the focus group process, one member of the community even brought in a neighborhood zoning table specifically pointing out the complexity in identifying which uses were allowed in each area. An updated table similar to the one currently used for the city's urban villages and the city of Tacoma could simplify this process. The alternative is a business owner or developer who needs to spend time reading each and every zoning description for mention of their desired use. We believe the status quo of use qualifiers, special conditions, and special regulations has stymied potential development. has stymied potential development community members would like to see. With the recommendations of varying levels of design review, citywide development standards, and the existing public involvement process, the character of existing neighborhoods will not be reduced with new commercial zones. If we look at the current zoning table once again, that was a source for much of the confusion within the commercial zoning code, we can see how each of the recommendations addresses the complexity of the current table. Recommendation Six addresses the area and zoning designation of the table that currently has limited variation and instead relies on the use qualifiers to distinguish allowable uses. Our hierarchical commercial zoning would help address intensity within the different commercial areas of the neighborhoods. Recommendation Five directly advocates the replacement of use qualifiers with common development standards and a context-specific design review, as well as hierarchical zoning. Density and intensity of commercial zones and their effects on the surrounding neighborhood can be addressed through design review as outlined in Recommendation Four and reorganization of existing commercial zones outlined in Recommendation Six. Recommendation Three will be able to address the special conditions and prerequisite conditions of commercial areas through the establishment of citywide development standards. Additionally, modern technology, such as the city's current GIS database, make identifying many of these prerequisite conditions in the commercial zoning tables redundant. Finally, special regulations of commercial areas can be addressed through hierarchical zoning, which again, addresses the intensity of uses. These six recommendations represent a comprehensive response to the challenge posed to us at the beginning of this process and the Big Five issues identified in the focus groups. Each of the Big Five issues are addressed by multiple recommendations, as you can see in this chart. Greater detail that we did not include in this presentation will be included in our final report. In conclusion, we believe these six recommendations have the potential to dramatically improve the workability, clarity, and adaptability of Bellingham's commercial zoning code. While the extent to which these recommendations are implemented is up to the city council, city planning staff, and the entire Bellingham community, we cannot stress enough that the greatest benefit will come from adoption of all six recommendations. We have vetted our ideas and research through interviews with professionals from a wide range of planning backgrounds, and believe our approach accurately addresses the concerns and challenges we identified in our background research and heard in our focus group sessions. At this time, if you have any questions about the process behind our recommendations or the recommendations themselves, we'd happily answer them.
Council? Councilmember Hammond?
First, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation, and the work that you did was outstanding. I did have questions. Did you do any analysis on timeline or cost for implementation of these concepts?
For cost, we did not. I think that's something that needs to be addressed in a budget item or something else brought to the city council. For timelines, typically, a lift of this magnitude could last as long as five years. These are pretty heavy recommendations. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight.
Councilmember Lillquist?
I actually want to agree with Dan here. Thank you very much. I think it was really, really good work. The city will always have regulatory responsibilities. We are the regulator. However, we need to move beyond the purely regulatory approach. I mean, the complaint I mostly hear is developers saying, "What do you want me to do?" And the regulatory approach is, "Here's what you can't do, and here's what you must do." And neither of those is the same thing as, "What do you want me to do?" I also view this as sort of like cleaning out your garage. You kind of throw away half the stuff that you came across, and you put all the rest of stuff on the shelves, and suddenly, there's so much more room in your garage. And I think if we do this, there'll be a lot of room in our garage, and we've thrown out a lot of stuff. I really like your recommendations. I noticed that One through Three really are mostly administrative, that they can be accomplished by our staff and administration. But it looks like Four through Six, because there are changes to zoning and zoning rules, that those will come before the council whenever they're ready. When we do remove use qualifiers, that'll be an effective rezone, rewriting the zoning on every property. If we consolidate zoning areas using overlapping rules, that will be an effective rezone. So I look forward. I don't know if I'll be here when Four through Six start to happen.
Councilmember Barker?
Do you guys agree that the One through Three is the lowest-hanging fruit that we could do sooner than later?
Yes.
Is there anything else that you see that we could do sooner than later, as you went through this process?
I think as the low-hanging fruit, definitely steps One through Three. Just comparing Bellingham's code to similar cities, just the navigability of the website was something we identified right off the bat that could be improved. That's a much shorter timeline, too. And I think kind of getting at the overall intent of some of these regulations. In our focus groups, some of the participants were kind of confused, if like, "Why is this regulation here? We think it's outdated." So maybe just kind of getting at the intent of those regulations and reviewing them on a consistent basis, are they still applicable to the code?
Anyone else?
Well, thank you so much for taking on a project that is lengthy and difficult, but also the fact that you are looking at it from the outside is probably a little easier because you're not as connected to it as we are sometimes. So it's nice to have an outside purview. I think you all did an excellent job. This presentation was fantastic, and I think that the things you offered are really going to make our lives and the developers, the planners, everyone's lives a lot easier as we get to implementation of these things. So thank you for this amazing project. And personally, I wanted to ask one thing. If someone has a copy of this presentation for me, because I was listening to everything and I wasn't writing notes for later, so I was like, "Oh, how am I going to repeat this?" So if you could leave me a copy, that would be great. And I think Councilmember Lillquist, do you have one more question?
Yeah, in addition to thanking the graduate students, I want to thank actually our planning director and mayor for bringing this forward. So the question is really for you, Kelly and Rick. When and how will you begin evaluating whether you can move forward on One through Three, and when and how will we decide if we're moving forward on Four through Six?
If I might respond?
Next, Lee.
At your next meeting, we'd like to schedule time with the planning committee. We'll distribute to all the council the final report, which covers these issues and goes into great depth on the background research, interviews with professionals in the field, with a specific expertise on all of these areas from other jurisdictions and from academia, and then talk about a work program that could be ascribed to start addressing it in chunks we can manage with our existing work program.
Terrific. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much, UW students. We really appreciate the work and the effort and the really wonderful presentation. Thank you.
You passed. Did they pass?
And we'd hire you, by the way, if there were openings. Okay, our third item today is a resolution directing the placement of the Greenways Four property tax... Did I skip ahead? Okay, this is item number three. Discussion of the Bellingham City Council Ward Boundaries. The Bellingham City Charter requires a periodic review and, if necessary, a redistricting of the boundaries of city council wards to ensure proportionality of population and registered voters among the wards. The memorandum that accompanies this agenda bill provides more detailed information, but just to give you a little background, this did come from our city auditor as a suggestion for us to relook at our boundaries. And James, are you... Or James, Peter Raffato, are you? Will you introduce this?
Yes, Peter Raffato, City Attorney's Office. Very briefly, I'll turn it over to James here in a sec, but as noted, this is a charter requirement. James Urb did a fair amount of research into it and also worked with Chris Beehe, who did some very good work with GIS in coming up with the proposed map. And this was also in consultation with Brian Henshaw, Finance Director, as well as county officials. And I would just add that we will be asking for a motion, as noted in the agenda bill, that's specifically spelled out. That's the preferred motion. And with that, I'll turn it over to James.
Good afternoon, everybody. Most of the information, the background and the legal analysis is included in the staff memo that is part of the packet. There are a couple of minor additions to that that I would like to add for your information. First is that the memo states that the analysis that was done that resulted in the proposed map that is included was the federal decennial data on total population. That's not factually accurate or entirely accurate. In speaking with Mr. Beehe, he told me that while that information was accurate back in 2010, each year, the Office of Financial Management updates that information based on data that we actually provided them. And so that was the data that was used to create the map. So data as recent as 2015, rather than as recent as 2010, was used for the total population numbers. Additionally, I wanted to let you know that we did run an analysis back in 2012 because our charter does require that we redistrict or at least engage in that analysis at least every four years. And at that point, using the 2010 data, no revisions were necessary. So just in the last four years, there's been a lot of change. Movement of population within the city that resulted in things no longer being roughly proportional, hence the proposed changes in the map, which included, I think, moving about eight or nine precincts from one ward to another, which would get us to within the target limits. There was an alternative proposal that unfortunately would have moved one of the council members outside of their own ward, so we scrapped that.
That must have been me.
It was, in fact.
Yeah, I see, I figured that. Trying to tell me something. It's time to go. I can look out my backyard now and see Ward Four within a few feet, so I guess I better be careful.
And so I don't know if anybody has any additional questions, but that's...
Could you put the map up on the screen just so the audience could see it?
I could certainly try.
I think Peter knows how to do it, just so people get an idea.
Can you get to the packet really easily? Oh, are you just going to do it that way? Okay.
Zoom feature on the head.
Only five people.
Five people.
Councilmember Lillquist, did you have a quick question?
No, I was just going to say, as required by our charter, I would move that we schedule a public hearing on possible adjustment of the ward boundaries.
Okay. Did you want to finish your presentation, James, or is there...
I didn't have anything to add. I was opening it up to questions, so...
Do you want to just review really quickly what the proposed... Because they're in here, right?
In terms of which precincts are changing, wards...
Yeah, maybe just a little overview, just a...
Yeah, that actually, I'm going to...
But do you want to wait till the public hearing? That's fine, I just...
Well, Chris might be better at the technical precinct numbers and changes than I am.
That might be great. I mean, we'll go over it again in the public hearing, but since we're having the discussion, maybe it would be good to just briefly discuss what some of the changes were.
I'll just, can I just give you a quick visual tour?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I don't know if you can see the areas that are cross-hatched, but just, I'm going to start from one and work my way around here. The first would be Precinct 208 was moved from Ward One to Ward Two. And then moving down into the area just to the northwest of Broadway, you can see that Precinct 222 went from Ward Three to Ward One. 267, which is just a small, very small block in there, 267 went from Ward Two to Ward One. In the Broadway Park area here, Precinct 216 went from Ward Two to Ward Three. Precinct 229, just south of Gene's Place here, went from Ward Three to Ward Four. Up in the kind of Northridge Park area, including Squawicum High School and Northern Heights Elementary, Precinct 221 went from Ward Two to Ward Four. And then jumping down to the boundaries between Wards Five and Ward Six, we had three precincts that went from Ward Five to Ward Six, and those were Precincts 251, 254, and 255. Generally, what you're seeing is, as we annex land in the north part of the city and as most of our new housing gets built in the north part of the city, you're seeing the boundaries pushed to the south. So we're flipping precincts from one ward to another to allow for that population growth in the north and maintain balance with the wards south of that. So that's generally what you're seeing, is kind of a flipping across each ward boundary like dominos, as you work from the north to the south side of the city.
Great, that's terrific. Councilmembers, any questions?
I guess I'll buy a house in Precinct 217. I think I'll be okay up there. Not a bad idea.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so we have a motion in front of us to schedule a public hearing. Any questions? No? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. And the staff will let us know when that public hearing is scheduled. All right, our fourth item today is a resolution directing the placement of the Greenways Four Property Tax Levy on the ballot for November 8, 2016 election. The Greenways Three Property Tax Levy expires at the end of 2016, and over the last 10 years, it has funded city greenways, open space sites, parks, and trails. On 5/16/16, City Council directed staff to prepare a resolution directing the placement of a Greenways Four Property Tax Levy on the ballot for November 8, 2016 election. The levy will be for seven years, beginning in 2017, at a maximum levy rate of 50 cents per 1,000 of assessed value. It will raise approximately $32 million for the acquisition, development, maintenance, and improvement of city greenways, open space sites, parks, facilities, and trails. And I am going to turn this over to Alan Mariner.
Thank you. Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. As Pinky indicated, we were directed to bring, staff was directed to bring forward a resolution placing the Greenways Four levy on the ballot for the November 8 election. I've worked closely with Seth Fleetwood, who is way up there in the corner, from the Citizens Greenways Committee, in finalizing this resolution. Just the basic terms, it calls for a 50-cent levy over seven years, with guidance in the resolution that 42% of the proceeds be used for development of park properties, 33% for acquisition, and 25% of the proceeds used for maintenance, operation, and capital replacement of park properties and facilities. Based on the feedback from Seth, I've made a number of minor changes to the ballot language that's in your packet at page 231, which is page five of the resolution. I'd just like to hand that out and then explain it. So just real briefly, it's two minor changes. One is that I moved the language describing the 50-cent levy in front of the language describing the $2.40 citywide levy limit. The idea is to get people thinking we're dealing with 50 cents, not with $2.40. So just trying to shift the focus. Also, at Seth's request... Also, at Seth's request, and I think this improves the ballot language, added language stating that Greenways Four is renewing a Greenways levy that expires in 2016. So those are the changes. I don't think it, they're substantive. I think it just makes the ballot language clearer, and staff would recommend that council adopt the resolution as modified.
Councilmembers.
Yeah. I would like to move approval of the resolution with the modified language.
Second.
Councilmember Lohquist.
I think there will be a long discussion, but it's time for the public to start discussing it and for us to start explaining, you know, the thinking. But I think discussion moves away from us now.
Okay, well, I am going to discuss it just a little. But I just want to be clear about what I do. I'm going to vote for this, but I am going to vote for it with a little bit of hesitancy. Not because I don't love greenways and not because I don't love our parks. It's because I do love our parks. And I, I'm a little concerned because I would prefer to fund all of our park system, and I would have preferred to go to a Metropolitan Park District. I don't think we're prepared for that right now, but I believe that that directly addresses all of our parks and all of our level of service matters. And I don't know if we're directly addressing level of service by adopting greenways. But a Metropolitan Parks District would align with our Parks Pro Plan, and it also would give us predictability, it would give us consistency through our system, and it would give us stability. And greenways, I don't want to lose funding for our parks, so I'm going to vote for greenways because I believe in our parks, but I wish it could have been done a little differently, and it would have covered our entire park system. So I don't want to lose funding for our parks, so I am going to move forward on this. But I just wanted to clarify how I felt about it before I voted. I just feel very responsible for our tax dollars.
I agree.
So, anyone else? No? Okay. Yeah?
So I agree with you, and I think that was part of the conversation, that really, we just didn't have the time to have that Metropolitan Parks District discussion. So I will hope that we would continue having that discussion. I think that was part of bringing the levy down from 10 years to less years, so we would be primed for that. And I think it really sets us up for success in getting there. But I do want to thank the committee that worked so hard on this and was so very flexible about how we could bend and shape this in order to get us to the place where we could be a little bit more fiscally prudent. So thank you to that citizens group. That's a huge amount of work, and they're taking on even more work now that they're going to be getting it out there. I think this really helps us in our plan of equity because it allows not just greenways, but also other properties that are really lacking in some areas where kids need to develop, and seniors and everybody, but mostly for me, kids, that access to outdoor space so that they are going to be our future stewards. So, thank you, and I look forward to supporting this and continuing the discussion in Metropolitan Parks District.
And I reiterate that, too. I really want to thank the Greenways Committee for all their volunteer work and for being so flexible to make this work for the city. Anyone else? Councilmember Lohquist.
I actually agree with a lot of what you said, Pinky, but I just think now is not the time for a tax hike, and now is not the time to solve our budget problems. That time may come soon. We're looking at it already, and I think we will need to address those larger issues. But this is an essential piece I think needs to be in place for all those other solutions to work. And it's a good time to renew our commitment to greenways, and so I think it's worth putting before the public.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Hamel.
Just along the same lines, I think that this proposal is fiscally prudent in terms of what we're asking the voters to support in light of all the other things that we're going to be asking them and other entities like the school district and potentially the county. So very supportive of this. I would have liked to see the Metropolitan Park District fly, but I don't think that we have the time to do that, and that's why I'm more supportive of this proposal.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to support this. I agree with a lot that has been set, a lot that's been set up here. But with this one, I do want to mention at least, this is a change from our traditional greenways in that 25% of this will go towards maintenance of parks. This has never been placed, the wording and this type of thing, in the greenways before for money expressly going towards the maintenance. And so I think this will go a long ways towards that. And for later, the further discussions and possibility of bringing forward the Metropolitan Parks District, because I think this will go with that. So I'm definitely prepared to vote yes for this.
Right. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in front of us to place the resolution for the Greenways Four property tax levy on the ballot for November eighth, 2016. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item in front of us is a proposed ordinance for the BMC 4.84. Staff proposes amending BMC 484, disposition of surplus real property to clarify language and more accurately reflect current real estate transaction processes. And Belling, sorry, BMC is the Bellingham Municipal Code. I know we use a lot of acronyms here, but just to clarify that, we're talking about our municipal code. And I have Amy Cram, who is going to, this is for information only. Thank you, Amy.
Good afternoon. Amy Cram, Legal Department, and we're here for information only on amendments to BMC, Bellingham Municipal Code 484, which is our disposition of surplus real property chapter. And there are two primary reasons that staff is proposing, recommending revising this section. And one has to do with some clarity issues in the language of the section, and the other has to do with updating it to reflect current real estate transaction practices. In your packet, you have the strike-through version, which looks pretty daunting to read, but actually, actually, most of the strike-through section on the third and fourth pages is really just incorporated into the first section where you see a lot of underlining. And then there are some other changes throughout. Some of the highlights I provided in the memo to council include the combining of some repetitive sections at the beginning of the chapter, clarifying the ability of council to direct staff to use certain requests for proposals, requests for qualification procedures in the negotiated sale section, which was not very clear before. And then also updating some of the closing cost sections that have been troubling for staff to deal with. The Legal Department took the lead in revising this section of the code, but we worked very closely with all of the departments that surplus property and had input both in what they'd like to see changed and then in actually reviewing the version that you see before you. I've also provided a clean version because it's a lot easier to read, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions if you have some.
Councilmember Lohquist.
Yeah, my only question for Ms. Cram is, why is this information only? It seems pretty ready to go. Is there a step we need to take between now and considering the ordinance?
My understanding is that council would like to be briefed on amendments of ordinances and proposals of ordinances before they come before you for a vote. So that is why.
Okay. That's appreciated. Councilmember Hamel.
I think that this is consistent with what we've been asking for in terms of being more, having more time to examine the documents and really kind of dig deep before we go to the vote. So I just appreciate that, that staff is doing that.
Counsel, any other questions, discussion? Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. So we'll plan to bring this back for a vote at the next council meeting.
Terrific. Thank you. And the last item for committee of the whole today is our interlocal jail facility use agreement proposal by Waukam County. On May 19th, 2016, the Waukam County executives sent a letter to the mayors of Waukam County cities proposing a two-year jail facility use agreement. The agreement provides, one, an option for up to three additional two terms, two, two separate options for inmate services, and three, fees to be set by Waukam County following adoption of the county budget. The letter from the executive's office requests that the city sign the agreement in advance of July 16, 2016. The fiscal impact is the jail per DM rate will continue at $98. It's up from $80 in 2015. And the booking fee will be increased from $55 to $100. And I'm going to turn it over to Peter or Brian to introduce. Peter, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, Peter Rafado, City Attorney's Office. So we wanted to get this to council for information at this point. As you may know, we were working on an extension agreement that would have lasted about six months, but we got to the point where I think the county wanted to just roll that discussion over into something that would be longer in duration. And so this, the duration, this is just not on the larger jail discussion, but just on current, use of the current jail. And they took some of the language that we worked on and created two options in the extension agreement, option one and option two. And I can talk a little bit about that in a sec. But basically, we're hopeful that we can suggest some language changes that we have some concerns about, and we're trying to get a meeting, hopefully either tomorrow or Wednesday, with Liz Gallery from the prosecutor's office to try to work out some of those. But the idea here is to really try to reach agreement. We may, we may be compromising on some issues. There is this request that this be done by July 1, 2016. And what we were working on for those six months is really trying to address what the sheriff had asked for in terms of how quickly inmates are removed or, well, removed from the county jail once they're booked, if the population is at a point where he feels that it's appropriate to remove. And what you see in the agreement, option one and option two, option one was the language originally proposed, and option two is mostly what the city had really requested. But in addition to that piece of it, this really is a redo of the entire jail use agreement. There's some provisions are the same, but there are some differences that we need to talk about. In terms of option one and option two, option one was a concern for the city because it had timelines in it that in discussions with the prosecutor's office, municipal court, and the police, we saw that as very challenging, at least to do on an ongoing basis. Ultimately, in this agreement, the sheriff basically says that users of the facility, and this has been presented not only to Bellingham but also to the small cities, users will be able to use the facility so long as there is capacity. And then, once folks do, once entities do use the jail, and if the population does spike, there are going to be some expectations under either option for how soon we can address, whether it's finding some alternative, EHM, a transport to Yakima County. We are leaning towards the option that we bargained for, which is option two, keeping in mind that Bellingham is very much wanting to avoid booking restrictions. But the difference between option one and option two, option one kind of has these really set timelines, 10 months or 10 hours essentially after a booking, if there's, if the population is high, we'd be expected to try to, or actually 10, I'm sorry, 10 hours after first arraignment, first appearance, we'd be expected to try to figure out what to do with an inmate, or on 24 hours' notice if we're talking about someone that's in there that's already convicted. But we're going to have, under option two, a weekly transport, which we currently have. And then if we get notice that more is needed, we can look towards an additional transport or some of the other tools that we can adopt, that we have adopted, such as EHM. So we're leaning towards option two, and that's the direction we're headed. And that's what I anticipate bringing back to council for approval after discussion with the county on some of the other provisions. So with that, I don't know if there are any questions.
Councilmember Lohquist, then Hamel, and then.
The other thing I noticed about this agreement is the substantial increase in the booking fee. So I have two questions. One, I assume that booking fee applies not just to the outside users like the city, but also to the county itself? Do they charge it internally? And also, why the large jump? Is that, I mean, can you tell me more about the increase in the booking fee?
The agreement that we operated under, right now, we have no written agreement with the Waukam County Jail or the county. The agreement that we were operating under before, and the language regarding cost has pretty much been adopted or used in this agreement, and that is that the county will be looking at setting their fees following their budget process. That's what the language in the agreement says. And we had a lot of discussion with the county when we were going over the, looking at the larger jail agreement about that. I think that there, I don't know the full answer to your question about exactly how those are determined, but I'm sure they look at anticipated costs. State law requires them to look at anticipated costs. And I think there was some description at a small cities meeting, apparently, that the booking fee, there isn't, there is going to be an extended period of time, maybe from six hours to eight hours, during which the county will hold an inmate, and if they are released within that period of time, then it will be just the booking fee and not the per diem charge. Beyond that, we're going to continue to ask that question, but that's all I have at this point. I don't know if there's any more information on that.
I mean, it's a rather large increase, and even if we are saving money on the number of people who are staying and have to stay in jail, just processing people the booking fee, it could be that we see no overall, you know, net cost savings. Is that your impression as well?
So it will certainly make us have less cost savings than we otherwise would have. I mean, it's simple as that. We do, we do, we need the county jail at this point for booking. And we do book a fair number of people. Our people are in there for a very short period of time. We are making some inroads into use of the jail on a per diem basis, not only through using Yakima County, but through EHM. I don't know how those numbers will ultimately play out in terms of this increase in the booking fee.
Okay. So I've got a few observations here and some questions. I'll try to contain them as best I can. So option, option one clearly is not going to work for the city. That basically requires almost an immediate transport, but I don't understand how that would work over, especially over the course of a weekend. Option two, item B, talks about the one, the once-weekly transport. The question that I would have, the last line in that, on that item says the city will make arrangements for additional transports if necessary to meet county needs to reduce the population. So my understanding is that the county would say, you know, look, we need additional transport next week, or, so are we set up to have that be provided for?
Yeah, if we have, if we have inmates that are eligible for transport, Yakima County will accommodate that. Just to give you a sense of that, I mean, our numbers are not, our numbers for those that are eligible to be transported are not high. So I think, I could be mistaken, I think we had three transported on Friday. The previous two weeks, I believe, we didn't have anyone to transport. So this is, and it won't be just Yakima County that we'll be looking to, I mean, if you read the language, we actually suggested some language that ultimately was, the county didn't want it in, and that's that we would be looking at other tools as well, EHM. But we will, it's not like Yakima County is going to be our only option. We look at Yakima County for those individuals that we really, we don't feel are appropriate for EHM or some other reduction in the population. And yeah, the difference between option one and option two, option one, it has these short timelines, it does provide, at least on the pretrial case, or as otherwise agreed to by the sheriff, whereas option two basically says, look, we're going to have this weekly transport, we're going to show you exactly what we're doing, and if we need more, we will do it. So it's, in my mind, it was just a more workable kind of option, because we don't So it's, in my mind, it was just a more workable kind of option, because we don't know what, under option one, we don't know if we'd be given an extra six hours, day, two days, we don't know, it's just as otherwise agreed to by the sheriff. So it seemed appropriate to really build into this something that we can all look at, and we know what's gonna be expected, and that's why we're leaning towards option two.
Does the additional transport require any additional cost from Yakima?
No.
Okay. I've got a few more items just to go through. So, under E, population reduction, number two, the piece that concerns me is the time period for transfer after first appearance may be shortened and/or booking restrictions implemented. The city specifically recognizes the potential need to implement booking restrictions in the event of overcrowding and/or the failure or unreliability of the facility systems or infrastructure. It kind of goes on to basically the same point. So, I think that this is, this to me seems like the poison pill in option two, is that we might, we may have to face booking restrictions. Is that, where do we stand on that?
Well, I mean, that's what's been presented to the city from really day one, that this is all a way to avoid booking restrictions, but at the end of the day, the sheriff is reserving the right to impose those. Now, if you look at option one, at the very beginning, it says, we will allow the third party to use our jail so long as there's capacity. So in my mind, there isn't a huge difference between option one and option two. The sheriff absolutely reserves the right under either one of these to impose booking restrictions.
My last point, or last concern, I guess, page 259 of the packet, under 4.8, booking an inmate, the healthcare clearance, we've seen this before, we've seen this with SCORE, we've seen it with Yakima, in terms of, this is exclusionary language, so the county shall the right to refuse to accept any inmate from the city who, in the judgment of the county, has a current medical, dental, or mental health condition which may adversely affect the safety of the individual, safety of the other inmates, or the safety of the operations of the jail. So, in the incarceration prevention and reduction task force meeting this morning, we had, we talked about these very items in terms of a person's mental health as they enter for the facility. So, is this saying that if a person's not mentally, does not have the mental health capacity to be in the jail, that they could reject a Bellingham inmate?
Yes.
Where does that inmate go?
Well, I mean, you know, correctional facilities, as we saw with Yakima County and SCORE, reserve that right in their agreements, and Waukamara County is doing the same. Again, a lot of this has to do with a certain reservation of rights to give a facility an out, essentially. That doesn't mean they'll exercise it?
Right, right. So they go on to say psychiatrically able to be in the facility, and I just, I have real issues with that. It also goes on to say that the county will notify the city in these instances so that the city can arrange for other housing, but there's no timelines specified, so could we include language that would say within a given amount of time that would be reasonable and prudent for the city?
I'm gonna have to take a look at the paragraph that you're talking about. I think if you're talking about healthcare clearance, I think we're talking about before they're even booked.
Right, so I'm just trying to figure out where that person would go if they're not qualified, or if they're disqualified due to this exemptive language here. It may or may not be the same standard that Yakima or SCORE would apply.
Yeah, I can certainly ask that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lillquist.
So, Dan was talking about that exclusion principle, but that only applies to misdemeanances that are the city's responsibility. I assume if there's a felon, the jail has to take the person, even if they're burdened in the way we're talking about, even if they're medically burdened or psychiatrically unstable enough that they would normally require hospitalization. Is that an accurate read? For a felon, you'd take him anyway, or what?
No, I wouldn't read it that way. I mean, it says any inmate from the city, and I can get clarification from, so one thing to keep in mind is that, and this is slightly different than the question that you're asking, but for whatever reason, the statutory scheme is such that the city is responsible for, for healthcare costs outside the facility for felons, not just the misdemeanors. So the general cost, you divide, you know, between the county and the city felony versus city misdemeanors, when it comes to healthcare, the city's responsible. So, I mean, you can imagine some really serious situations where folks, I mean, they may need intensive care, and so it's understandable that the county jail is not equipped to deal with that, and so that's, you may have to have someone, you may have to have a law enforcement officer basically sit with this person or monitor this person while they're getting intensive care. So, I think that's the intent of this sort of provision. If they don't have the services in the jail to accommodate whatever mental health or medical need is of that individual, they reserve the right to not accept that person.
That makes sense to me, but what if the county had one of their own inmates who also came in medically unstable or psychiatrically unstable? Would they refuse acceptance of their own prisoner, or would they just do what we're asking? That is, you set up an alternate way of also holding them under some sort of protective custody? You know what I'm saying? I mean, the county must deal with this issue just as often as we do.
My understanding is that they may very well have to, you know, reject one of their own sheriff's deputies, I mean, they would just work it out. They say, like, this individual is not, you know, what we're really talking about, this healthcare clearance, are probably folks that are kind of, it's on the margins, they're gonna require it of everyone, but that's really only gonna be a question where it's not totally clear, and then they have to go through the process. But I think they would, they would have to, I believe they would apply that standard to their own inmates, or their own defendants as well. I don't know that, I don't know that there's any, I can look at language in here and see, we can propose something that says they will have the same standard as they do for their own inmates.
Well, I guess I'm just suggesting, if they already need protocols in place to handle medically and psychiatrically unstable inmates, why won't they just use that procedure for our inmates as well as for theirs? And we, of course, as you say, are required by law to bear that extra expense, and we'd be doing that. I'm, you know what I'm saying? Why invent two parallel systems to handle the same rare circumstance?
Well, the extra expense is typically outside facility, healthcare, not inside facility. The inside facility costs are typically incorporated into the bed day rate.
Isn't this exclusionary language been in the other agreements we've had with them? Or is it, am I wrong to assume that even a restaurant or any building there is reserves the right to reject anybody for whatever reason they want? I'm just saying, there are signs on the door that say that we respect the right to, but this language has been in here in our previous agreements, hasn't it?
I'll take a look at what exactly, there is, the healthcare clearance language stands out as a slight change, but they have always had a standard by which they may need to say, no, this person isn't fit for jail. I mean, there's a fit-for-jail process that our law enforcement are familiar with, where they may be asked to go get that fit-for-jail sort of evaluation at the hospital. So that part, I agree. This did not jump out at me as different. The police have seen this language, they didn't, I don't think they had a particular concern about that, but to the extent they do, I'll have that discussion with the county.
Councilmember Parker. This may be a question for Brian, but in looking at the $55 to $100, have you had a chance to look back for the booking fee and see, since we're already trying to find ways to decrease our expenses, if that's gonna be, earlier it was mentioned that we might be already saving some, and then this will kind of weigh itself out? Have you had a chance to look at that and see if, not that it matters, because I guess we have no other option? Is that maybe a moot point? I withdraw my question. But I do want to hear if Mayor Kelly had anything to say in regards to this.
Well, first of all, as you all know, the county runs the jail, and the way they've set up these options is basically, they allowed the number two option because that's most of what we had asked for. So if it was up to them, I think they'd just have the number one option because everybody else had agreed with that. And I think that they are feeling uncomfortable legally, and Peter, jump in if I'm misrepresenting something, about having us or anyone in the jail without an agreement. They think, they think that legally they need an agreement. Whether they absolutely do or not is not, I don't know that. So, basically, they're saying, we have to sign this agreement because if we don't have an agreement with them, then we won't have access for our misdemeanors in the jail. Is that correct? So, what I looked at, when I looked at alternatives one and two, we don't, whether it makes sense to do it differently or not, we don't have a lot of leverage in this particular instant. I'm focusing my attention on the jail alternatives and other things, because right now, we need a place to book our people so that we don't have to build our own facility, which isn't gonna be happening by July whatever. And secondly, we need, as far as we're trying to keep, a place for our pretrial misdemeanors so that we don't have to send them over to Yakima, even though we may be doing that with some of our pretrial misdemeanors. So, I guess when I look at this, I look at what we can probably change and what we can't. Do we want to still have access for the, to the jail for our, for booking and pretrial misdemeanors, or do we not? And I, from the discussion that we had at the meeting today, it didn't sound like they were trying to exclude people with mental illness or whatever. I think that's a worst-case scenario in that list of things that could happen, but the county runs the jail, and they have a lot more authority than we do about how that jail's run. And if we're gonna use it to whatever extent we want to use it, then we probably have to make some compromises with them over what it says in the agreement. And what I was very, I guess, gratified for, I was gonna mention about the small cities meeting that Brian and I attended on Tuesday, and it was Sheriff Elfo that asked Peter to work with Liz to try to work some of these things out. And I think major things like the, I can't remember the time or something, probably wasn't something he could work out, but other things he left to them to work out. So I'd be interested to see what happened when Peter and Liz meet, to try to get to the agreement. The direction that I've given is that this agreement is temporary. It goes away if there's a new jail. So this isn't something we're bound to forever. It can be renewed every two years, three times. So, at worst, we'd live with this for two years. That would be, so you're not signing a perpetual agreement with the county. I can live with something like that while we're working out the other things about the jail and the diversionary, mental health, and other things that we're working on. So, I would rather continue to have access for booking at the jail. I mean, that is my goal and the goal that I have for the police department and for our prosecutors, that we don't have people running around because we don't have an agreement with the county on whether we can book people into the jail or not.
Thank you. You know, I asked for your opinion on this because I really feel, watching this as a constituent and then coming into it, like, you've been able to really keep your eye on the ball, and I feel like sometimes I can get a little off, and to keep coming back to the diversion and what we're trying to get to, I appreciate that. And you did again, as I was starting to get a little distracted, bringing it back to that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, of course, I'd want my own way, just like everybody would want their own way, but I know that there's sometimes you don't get your own way. The other thing I want to mention, though, too, is when we were out at the small cities meeting, there was some kind of epiphany that happened somewhere in that group. And the county council is doing their job by putting together the jail task force. The small cities in Bellingham and the county are doing their part by putting together five administrators from the small cities, Bellingham, and the county, to kind of start with a clean sheet of paper instead of trying to massage whatever was there before. And for me, hopefully, that will be people that are not the elected officials, not people who have been involved in the politics of the whole thing, but people that are looking at the facts and come forward to the jail task force, maybe with some options, so that that task force won't have to spend as much time looking at, starting from zero. Because we had given the, talked about at the small cities, about six different options, including the status quo, about how you might want to move forward if you were gonna build a new jail, and really, we were stuck on one. And so now, we're hopefully gonna look at all of those, but the first thing that I asked Brian to do, because Brian will be representing me on that group or representing the city, is first decide what we need. It's really different if we talk about what Bellingham needs for the criminal justice engagement with the jail, rather than just, we're part of the jail. But what especially do we need? That will make a big difference if we've identified that in how we maybe believe the jail either should be funded, both capital and operating. So, I think it's an opportunity that we have not had up until now, and I have to say I was both surprised and happy when that happened.
Councilmember Hamel.
Just a couple of quick closing remarks. We were presented today with the results of the EHM program, the Electronic Home Monitoring Program, and during the defined period, which I believe was the second quarter of 2016, first quarter, pardon me, so if we would have, if those folks would have gone and been incarcerated in the local jail, it would have cost about $40,000. On the Electronic Home Monitoring Program, it costs $1,400. So there was a substantial cost savings to taxpayers, and I think it's, we're showing that that program works. And then, just secondly and finally, just want to clarify to my colleague, Gene, that, and I get that there's this exclusionary language as part of these agreements that we, that we are asked to sign and agree to. What I don't want to have is a situation where a law enforcement officer doesn't have like, have an option to, that there's no place to put this person who might be a danger to themselves or others, so that we do, that we have a place for that person to go, whether it be the jail, or the hospital, or the triage facility. So I'm just trying to cross all the Ts and dot the Is, so.
Well, and just to further clarify that, if in fact, we were in that situation right now, and it wouldn't be ideal, we could drive someone to Yakima or SCORE. So, we would, we wouldn't be, we would have an option to address that unique situation. I don't, it isn't, my belief is we're not gonna be faced with that, that often, if ever, but it wouldn't be saying, I don't know what to do. It would just be having to do something that was more complicated than what we'd like to do.
Well, obviously, this isn't ideal. We'd like to keep everyone close to us here in Bellingham if we could, but we're doing the best that we could. One thing I would like to know is if they could define for us why our cost has doubled, I think we should know that. And we realize there's, everything gets more expensive, but doubled in one year. I'd like to see what the breakdown of that is. If not anything else, that would be the end of committee, and we're gonna move on to the approval of minutes. Thank you, everyone. We have one set of minutes is for our committee meeting on May 16, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Older New Business. Councilmember Boardman.
Yeah, I've got an item. I'm not sure if everyone remembers, getting something in the mail from Bob Pritchard regarding the Bellingham, a Bellingham flag. And the Downtown Partnership had, a while ago, had did a competition, a design competition to, about designing a Bellingham flag. And they, the winner of that was designed by Bradley Lockhart, and there's been more movement since this had happened. I know Bob has sent around things, there's now, some other people have put up on Facebook page about Bellingham flag, and the Bellingham Bells are asking about using this and things. So I was wondering if the council would be interested in having, about having Bradley come and just a little presentation on his design, how it came to be designed, and other things. Not for us to say, let's adopt this, but just since it's seeming to be taking off around the community, the idea, in the downtown anyway, and people starting to use it and wanting to use it, if the council would be interested in having a short presentation of... about the flag and why.
Yeah, and I was going to ask if Peter could define what our legal parameters are.
Well, I did have a conversation with Bob Pritchard, we just had coffee last week, and one of the things that I told him, the way I feel procedurally, is, that was a great idea that Nick had to do this competition. It wasn't necessarily sanctioned by the city or had any parameters set by the city, and I said, if, you know, they want to have a downtown flag, or a, or a, you know, a Bellingham Partnership flag, or whatever, but that the city council, so this fits into what Terry's saying, the city council would either have to say they'd like us to run a citywide competition, or somehow sanction this if it's going to be called the City of Bellingham Flag, because there, I mean, we can't have people just coming out of the woodwork. It happens that we might like this one, but they might have one that we didn't like, too, because we didn't say we'd like it to meet this criteria. Bob said he doesn't care anymore if we sanction a flag or do anything else, because he thinks it's just going to catch on like wildfire, and I told him that that was a great way to, to do something, is just to let people like it and do whatever they wanted with it, but I don't, I feel a little uncomfortable indicating that it might be the official Bellingham flag at this point in time, since we didn't authorize it before it developed. So, hearing about it would be fine, I think that would be great, but that's a conversation I've had with Bob and with, who's the new director of Bellingham Partnership, Alice. We had that discussion about six months ago, but it is catching on, I go into the Antique Mall every day, and there's all this stuff about the Bellingham flag and whatever. So, that was my opinion, and the council might not agree with me, but I just wanted to let you know what I was telling people. So, you go ahead, Peter.
I think, so, just quickly, nodding heads of this, are we open to a presentation?
Well, actually, before I vote on that, I-
We're not going to vote on that.
Oh, well, you're asking for nods.
Yeah, I'm just, because it's not really a-
And, by the way, I did talk to the mayor before, and, and talked with her about that, about bringing this forward to the council, about doing a presentation, and not asking it to be adopted, but just the presentation, so, this wasn't a surprise, I want you to be aware that we did talk about it ahead of time, and she agreed that it was fine, and so, yeah.
Councilmember Lillikquist and Barker, is that right?
Well, I want to say, I've got no problem with the community coming up with an idea for the city, some of the best ideas probably don't come from us. I also don't see a particular significance in making it official or unofficial, if people want to treat it as our flag, fine, a lot of cities in Washington State do have flags, and they're really forgettable-looking things that no one pays attention to. If this thing has traction, just automatic organic traction, I think that's great, and we could hear about it, but it doesn't seem like we need to decide, I think the community can decide, and we can listen.
Councilmember Barker.
So, I, being of a generation that likes rogue and guerrilla art and things, sometimes it takes the mystic out of it when we start trying to categorize it and explain it, and I think right now, citizens are having a really great time with it, and it has some mystique, and so, I mean, if somebody's just dying to come tell us about it, and we had a lot of extra time, I'd say, "Great," but, not that I don't want to hear about it, I would, I wouldn't mind going to something that was offered where I could go listen to it, does it need to take up council time? I don't think so, and I, I think that it might take some of that mystique out of it, let's just, I say, just let it roll.
Part of the reasons I wanted to bring this forward, about the idea, because it is something that is starting to get traction, people, council members are going, are going to be hearing about it, other citizens, and so, just as a way of, of knowing what was out there, and it wouldn't have to be, it could be a very short thing.
Yeah, I, I don't mind listening either, but I want to delve back to what the mayor said, because I've had a few calls from some people who wanted to get involved, they were under the assumption that the city sanctioned this, and they wanted to bring their flags forward, and they were turned down, so we got to be careful with this one, listen to what he has, bring it forward, but if we are going to ever officially anoint the flag, I think it's going to have to be open to anybody in the city to come up with one, and that one might, who knows, I'm just saying.
Right.
But, no, I don't mind listening to how they did it, I think it's a great thing when people are trying to do good things for our downtown, so that, that's fine.
And that might be a great way to present it, that it's coming from the Downtown Partnership, explaining what they did, so that we don't have other people wanting to-
Right.
-present on their flag.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
That's right. Put a flag with my picture on it.
But, I would love the city to have a flag, but I just want to make sure that we go around, we do it in a process that is, follows, is compliant, and follows whatever regulation we have to. Anything else for Older New Business? Okay, I have one thing. Last, last county meeting, they had a proposal on a resolution, we did talk about supporting if the county were to put together a board like they did for the EMS for the jail. They discussed a resolution, which would include two staff members from the city council to participate on the board, they have not passed it yet, this has just gone out for their first discussion, and just to let you know, so, Jean and I have decided that we would be willing to step up and serve on this board, we will put this through officially, legally, as a process, later on, after they've, if, after they've proposed their resolution, but I just wanted everyone to know that we have recognized that the county has put this out there, and if you could kind of noodle on that, and then we'll discuss that later on when it comes forward. Anything else? Okay, so, we are going to move to, yes.
Do you need your flag?
I need my flag, yeah. I had something for New Business, if this is the time for me to do it, and it's just an announcement, Cascadia Rising has been getting a lot of publicity, it's a, kind of a preparation activity, two-day event, June 7th and 8th, in Wacom County, preparing for a 9.0 magnitude quake, tsunami, and aftershocks, which I guess we need to be prepared for. Many city Bellingham departments are participating, I think, I, I think the council had been invited to participate, 40 organizations, 600 participants, I mean, people are taking this seriously, because it is something that could happen, and then there'll be a presentation afterwards, lessons learned by the people that are running the training for us, and there's a wacomready.org website, if people are interested in knowing more about the activity.
Thank you, Mary.
That's it?
All right.
Well, he said 11, and I thought, "Yeah, that's probably right."
We are going to go into an executive session, we have four items in four, in front of us today, there will be a report out in our regular meeting tonight, we have a collective bargaining contract negotiation, a litigation AJ versus City of Bellingham, a litigation U Street Associations versus Wacom County, a litigation Fred Meyer Stores, appeal of the MDNS and consolidation permit, we are expecting about 45 minutes, I will be back here at 3:35 to adjourn or extend, thank you.